We're going to begin the meeting with a question of the flag. Question, ladies and gentlemen, for which saints, one nation, under God, is this law? I'm looking at the agenda and I'm going, I wonder if this is the amended one or not. We'll know as we go along. This is the one that was printed out in my box.
Yeah, that's a good one.
Could I have an approval of village board meeting minutes from April 4th, 2024?
Moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, moving into citizens comments. See lots of folks here tonight. I'm going to ask that we contain our comments for like two, three minutes, not hours.
Mary Ann Williams, Two Division Street, Greater Baldwinsville Chamber of Commerce. We have four different events coming up in May. We have Coffee Talk on Wednesday, May 1st at 10:00 a.m. That will be at Hunt ERA Real Estate on Route 57 in Liverpool. On Wednesday, May 8th, we have our monthly luncheon. This time it will be at Tassone's. You register online no later than April 30th. You can find that link on our Facebook page or you can send me an email at baldwinsvillchamber@gmail.com. Tuesday, May 14th, we have our second Coffee Talk of the month. This will be at the Baldwinsville Central School District Transportation Center. And then on Sunday, May 19th, from noon to 3:00 p.m., Latresse Salon and Spa will be celebrating their 20th anniversary.
Thank you. I'm going to comment on your comments if I can to people. If you haven't ever been to the Transportation Center, try to get out there. You know, it is impressive.
Could I piggyback off her comments?
I guess so.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Chamber's member showcase that was held at Anheuser-Busch a couple nights ago on Tuesday. Great event, very happy to go there. Saw a lot of people I knew, people from the village and local businesses. Very nice, nice evening. I was there for, I don't know, an hour, half hour, 45 minutes and it was, I thought, very nice. So I was glad to be there. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul Drer Wyberg, 40, Artillery Lane. I've had this question on my mind for several years, but I've only been a resident in the village for two, so this is my opportunity. I'm aware of the longstanding tradition of declaring May 30th to be Memorial Day in the village of Baldwinsville. But my question is, are village employees nevertheless given the legal holiday?
I believe so.
Okay, so they do not lose that three-day weekend, which was the purpose of the change?
No, village employees.
That's all?
Yes, they get that.
I was going to say, we make them work on the 30th because for the parade and whatnot.
Welcome to the village. Are you coming to the mic, Brian?
I am, yeah. I'm trying to avoid you here. Hi, Brian Bermeister, 66, Oswego Street. Oh, just lost my notes here. All right, so I've got a couple of quick things. Maybe. Here we go. Yeah, oh, there it is. All right. So thanks to Chuck to working with me on correcting the tree that was planted incorrectly in November. Yeah, it's kind of funny. So you know I've been so excited about that tree. I look at it every day and they planted it, I don't know, I think it was maybe late October, early November last year. And of course, they had no leaves on it. So it wasn't until it bloomed last week that I was sure it wasn't the right tree. So they're working on it to try to get me a Catalpa tree, which is what I requested. It's actually not a bad tree. It's a Bradford pear, but I personally don't love the smell of them. And they're great from a distance, you know? So anyway, I appreciate you and Maria trying to work that out. And it'll be a great day when I have the right tree and I can see the leaves and it'll be a big shade tree and it'll make the Oswego Street fill in a little bit eventually and it'll be a happy, happy day. So I appreciate that. Thank you. The other question I have, unfortunately with the events in the last week with the Syracuse Police Department and I guess if the chase ended in Liverpool, right, our neighboring community next to it. I guess this is a question for you, but maybe for the general panel too. I'm concerned about our officers' safety. And one of the things that came to mind was, I know it's still illegal in the state to have all tinted windows. I guess it's a twofold question. How often does that represent a danger to them? And do we, when we do a routine pull over, fine people for having that incorrect if it's a New York State plate?
Yeah, so a vehicle can't have the driver's side, passenger side, front windows tinted out beyond, I think it's 70% light transmission, which means 70% of the light has to come in. I'd have to look at the law. It's been a while since I've actually looked at that section. But actually, it's one of my, when I was a road patrol officer, one of my peeves. So that is a danger to an officer anytime they approach a vehicle to have those vehicles' windows heavily tinted out, especially at nighttime. So that is something that our officers will take action on if necessary. It's a 375 violation, which means it's an equipment violation. So it's something that if we write that ticket and the motorist gets that taken care of within 24 hours, then that ticket is dismissed for them. So, you know, I'd have to pull out records. I don't know how many tickets we write a year on that. But, you know, we tend to more often address aggressive driving behaviors. But certainly, those tinted windows can present an issue and a problem. Other states like Florida that allow tinted windows because of the heat and the sunshine there to protect the inside of the car. So as you mentioned, if it's a New York State plate. But yeah, it's certainly something that we do address when we run across those situations.
Yeah, so I mean, like you pull over somebody for speeding, you check their inspection. You check, you know, the windows would be an additional thing. They had headlights out, that kind of thing. You'd add it in and it'd generate more revenue in fines then?
Our goal is not to generate revenue. We're not a revenue-producing organization. We're public safety organizations. Any revenue that might be produced from fines is ancillary to what our mission is for our organization that we've been tasked with. So, you know, oftentimes if we're going to write a ticket such as that, it's because it's so egregious that we're looking to address that particular issue.
I would make an educated guess that people who have those tinted windows and live here tend to be more aggressive drivers, but I don't know if there are any studies done about that.
I don't know if they take care of it or not. It's possible. I know some people like the look.
Yeah, I mean, it looks cool, sure.
And things and stuff, but it's something that certainly presents an officer's safety issue too.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine. I mean, it's bad enough that, I mean, I guess they're taught to come up to, what, the rear door, not the front door right away? Is that how they usually approach the car?
There's an officer's safety process that we go through that most people are somewhat familiar with, but not going to get into detail with it here.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine. I just, I can imagine that would be that much more intimidating to not have any knowledge of what's going on in the car as you approach.
It definitely is. Presents more concern, no doubt about it. You're absolutely right.
All right, well, it sounds like you're doing what you can, but be aware and we're rooting for you.
Appreciate the support. Thank you very much.
For anyone else wishing to address the board? If not, proceed. Trustees' comments. Eric is at a Bruce Springsteen concert, so he's not going to make any comments. White?
I won't make any either then.
I have a couple of comments. One, the village is going to be working with the volunteer center this year to help coordinate volunteers for the visitor center. Mary Ann, I'm hoping that you'll be willing to share your knowledge with us of what you've done over the past couple of years in terms of any contact information and whatnot. So somebody, I'm not sure who, will be getting in touch with you to coordinate that. And then the only other thing I wanted to comment on was how much fun it was last week if you were on Facebook and the excitement around Ryan Gosling wearing a Beagle football jacket. And somebody, oh, somebody's not on Facebook. Yes, it was a big, it was a big deal last week. He was, he was in New York City for Saturday Night Live and he was seen going in and out of a restaurant wearing a Baldwinsville football jacket.
Old, old one.
An old one from the 80s.
Somebody named Jason.
My error. Somebody's named Jason.
That a stylist got at a flea market in California.
These are my comments.
I'm Ryan Gosling, see you.
So, yeah, actually, a classmate of mine is, was a, I think, a fraternity brother with one of Ryan's security guards. And so the stylist may actually be writing up a story about the fact that his flea market find that he found that he and Ryan both liked ended up literally buzzing on Facebook last week, so.
At least in Baldwinsville.
At least in Baldwinsville. And bees all over the country, so. Anyway, I thought that was fun. That's all I have.
Trustee psycho.
Just the agenda, thank you.
Yeah, that gossiping thing was pretty awesome. I just want to express my condolences to the, to all police departments really and to the families of Lieutenant, was it Husak or Hasek?
Husak.
Husak and Officer Johnson's family for the passing of their loved one. And outside of that, just stick to the agenda.
I would also offer my condolences to the family of the fallen officer. And anybody who knows me has got to know that one of my signature issues is pedestrian safety in the village of Baldwinsville. We have a number of points in the village, including the Four Corners, but a number of other crosswalks. And a week ago Tuesday, I witnessed a woman almost get very, very seriously injured or worse. She had the light in her favor. She was crossing a crosswalk and a car took a pretty quick right turn right into her. She's all right. I think at the very most, she had to break or fall with her right hand, but she's okay. And I stuck around and I spoke to her about it. And I also gave a statement to the police officer who came on the scene. And I've had two near misses of my own at the Four Corners, particularly crossing from BG1 to Timeless Tattoo. For some reason, I think it's especially hard for drivers taking left turns if they've got the green light. And you, the pedestrian, also has the walk light. And the first time it was just me and of course, I was yelled at by a fish-shaking driver that I tried to point to the, you know, to the walk light and, but he didn't seem to care. Second time I was crossing, there was a young boy walking his bicycle across the street with me. He must have been about, you know, 10 or 12 years old. And it happened to us. And again, the driver yelled at us both and then, you know, the two of us stopped and I looked at him and said, "Are you okay? Did you see what I..." And the driver actually accelerated toward us while we had the walk sign. So it's a pretty dangerous situation there. And then we also had that recent fender bender that I think had something to do with people taking those turns a little bit too quickly and a little bit too tightly. But we also have crosswalks throughout the village and I've discussed this with Chief Leffencheck. You know, that, you know, something needs to be done. We need to get the state DOT on it. And so what I have done is I have arranged a meeting with the office of State Senator Rachel May. She may or may not be there. It's on Monday and, you know, there's the possibility she won't be able to make it in person. But I think I would like to, you know, arrange a meeting with her in person as well. And she seems very amenable to that to discuss all these issues. And I've been, I'm going to be giving information from Chief Leffencheck for me to pass on to Senator May and for her in turn to pass on to the state DOT and see if we can get some action. That seems to have been deferred for some time now and it's, you know, it's time to get it done, you know, because we want to make, especially, you know, the Four Corners, a pleasant, enjoyable, safe place for pedestrians. And Chief, you know, during your report, if you want, you know, you might have something to say about that.
I'm writing an email to you.
Okay, that's great. That's great. I appreciate that.
I'll be happy to comment on it.
And Donna, just so you know, we did get notification, I think it was last week or the week before, that the state is moving ahead with that program for the signs for those three different spots. And that we can't pin them down to when they're going to do it, but they're on a list of, I think, 15 different intersections that they're doing. I didn't get a chance to tell you that either. I've tried to pin them down so they're going to be done this year and they're not sure, but they...
I'm just going to...
My contract was like three years ago and I got the ball rolling. So it's down to that now.
I was told by DOT that once those were approved, it was a three-year contract that the contractor had been awarded so they could be installed at any point in time over the next three years. Clearly, I'm sure like every community, we'd like to be at the top of the list. But I'm sure there's other communities that want to be at the top of the list too.
But it is out there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's good. And I also, you know, I want to talk about, you know, some adjustments that can be made to the lights at the Four Corners that would kind of prevent people from making really quick turns into crosswalks.
We have the same issue with Tappan and Syracuse Street, which I'm going to put an email to you as well. That when people are crossing, people coming off of Tappan Street, especially making that left-hand turn to turn north, oftentimes, you know, that might not be their first look is to see in that crosswalk and things. So again, that's another area where if traffic ceased while the pedestrians were crossing, because there's not nearly any pedestrians there, but there's still a decent number, especially with the business located right there. I think that would be an improvement for that particular area as well.
Oh, I agree.
And then as Chuck just mentioned, those crosswalks that, yeah, I got in the ball rolling with some time ago with them at Marble Street and Syracuse Street, at East Genesee Street in front of the library and on Oswego Street, Route 48, right at Brown Street. Those will be three major improvements for pedestrian safety in this village.
Look forward to your email.
Yes.
Thanks. Otherwise...
Thank you, Donna. I don't want to be a downer here. But could you please, all trustees, if you're reaching out to something like a state senator, could you keep myself and the rest of the board in the loop?
Yes, I should have copied you on my email to...
But I appreciate you reporting it tonight.
I thought about that afterwards and I should have forwarded it.
Because if I got something from them, I'd go, "I don't know what you're talking about."
Well, I got pretty excited about, you know, something needed to be done and I saw a woman almost get killed, so. Excited.
That's exciting. I wanted to bring up, I met with some other mayors last night and we were addressed by, while I was in the meeting, I got a couple of phone calls and wasn't in there the whole time. But by the president of the New York Commission of, or Conference of Mayors. And she pointed out that the state's budget was due a while back and she thought it'd be in, before she spoke to us, she expects it and will be done tomorrow and is anticipating an increase in something called AIM funding, which is aid to municipalities. That hasn't happened in a decade or longer. Don't know what they're talking significantly, but this could be a big assist to Village of Baldwinsville, to all cities and villages across. Every city except New York City is under this program. So maybe some good news for us. I need to add an item to the agenda. I guess it's I. I'm going to ask authorization to expend an additional $65,000 to complete the roof project on the Canton Woods Senior Center. We received a grant for $100,000 and when we were in that process, thought the project would come in closer to that. It's now coming in at closer to $165,000. We've got the funding in place. Want to go ahead and get it done this year as opposed to doing it over two years and patching it together. Want to also acknowledge the loss of law enforcement officers in our community. But really want to emphasize the appreciation of the officers that work within our village that we take for granted often, but every day they never know what's behind the door they're approaching. It's a, I'm sure they're feeling the stress this week more than they have because their own mortality is right in front of them. So want them to know we support them 100%.
I will pass that message along, Mayor. Thank you.
And then I have a question for you, Chief. This was a curiosity question when I was out in the parking lot. I remember years ago when our patrol cars first got those little square things that were on the rear fenders? That allowed you to read...
License plates.
Now they're not there anymore, so how...
They are not. So those were originally obtained a number of years ago with grant funding. And since then, over time, those aged out. Those are expensive systems. I actually, in the last round of technology funding that the state put out, asked for LPRs, license plate readers. And those awards have not come out yet. So those cost somewhere between $15,000 to $17,000 or $18,000 per unit. And then over time, the units, because they're exposed to salt and the rain and the snow here in this climate, the lifespan on those, it's finite, it's not infinite. And they're very expensive to maintain. They went out of warranty and then they just become obsolete because they're old and that is functional. So obviously, with that type of expense, it's tough to justify a budgeted item when there's other things that are more pressing and that are needed. And it's something that we recognized as a need. So when the state asked for what technology funding we might like, that was something that we did put in for. I actually put in for, I think, five or six units. We'll see what comes down the pipe, but the state has not awarded that, those...
Because I remember I was impressed at what information they got.
Oh, there's a tremendous amount of data that comes through. There's no doubt about it.
And I was hoping technology had just replaced them and that you still had that capability.
Yeah, no, and they're now smaller and sleeker, but still some of the inherent issues still arise. But it's certainly something that we would like to have as a tool for our people out on patrol, especially some of our officers that are, you know, very aggressive in their, in their performance of vehicle and traffic and aggressive driving behaviors.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. So moving on to department heads. We'll move to our attorney.
Just a couple of things. First of all, just to let the board know, I've been working with, and I think I may have mentioned this before, but I'm working with the zoning board and they've taken on a project because they hardly ever have a meeting required. There haven't been that many applications. So what they wanted to do is to get together and look at some of the issues that come before them and see if there could be changes to the code that would ameliorate some of those issues. So right now, we're looking at the sign code and some things that are in there that need to be changed. So not right away, but shortly, I'll be bringing something before the board once they approve everything to maybe make some changes in the, in the sign code. But they're doing a good job, a good job looking at that. Again, because they're the ones that see the applications for variances coming before them for matters that, in the sign code, where there may be some provisions there that aren't really clear and that sort of thing. So they're doing a good job with that. Just one other question too, on the AIM, our grant person that we have in a relationship with it, would she be able to help with that or...
With the AIM? No, we've already submitted, we submitted a letter requesting to the governor's office and various legislative leaders, saying how important it was to increase that. They've met with Senate and Assembly leaders who have supported that. And typically what they've had, this is what she expressed to me, was that every year they support it. And every year then, the three men in a room, and it gets, the governor or the senator and somebody from the Assembly get together and it gets cut and they all say the other person did it. So she actually posed the questions and, "What do you need?" And they said, "Well, we need, we need your mayors to tell us and town supervisors and city mayors to tell us that they really need it." So they coordinated and we sent them information and apparently they are responding.
I just said, I mean, I know that taking her on was a good, that is, our grant person was a good idea. I didn't know anything was going on with them. Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
Moving to our village clerk.
I will stick to the agenda, thank you.
To our senior center coordinator.
Okay, just very quickly, music program's going strong. So our next concert is May 17th. That's a Friday, 11 o'clock. Come on in for the music, make a reservation and stay for lunch. And other than that, please go to the village website or either town's website for all of our program information. That's it.
Thank you. Public works?
We've been through the village twice now with brush. That's going well. The benches that we put out in the Four Corners, we're upgrading those benches. They're going to be similar to the benches that are down at the, down at the square. We're going to replace them all in the Four Corners. We're going to do some in front of Kenny's with those lights that were part of that grant and get that taken care of. The crosswalks, we talked about the crosswalks. We were looking at the crosswalks when, you know, I hate to say this, but everybody my age anyways knows that is smokers' path from the school up on United Street. And the United Streets, the ones that Mike was talking about is a state road. They control it. This is our road. And I had talked with the board and we'd got two different signs. Mike looked at them, we're okay with them. They came in this week, they sent eight to 10 weeks out and showed up this week. So we may get those up next week. They're going to be right there, they're going to be with buttons on them. They'll flash when the kids go across that crosswalk there. We think that'll be a nice addition. We're going to try to get that up next week if we can. We had some little chatter on Facebook and I don't want to, I usually don't look at them, but people are wondering why we're digging up some of the same water cuts as we did this winter. And we are doing that. In the wintertime, you don't have hot blacktop. So when you have a water break, you have to patch it and you patch it with cold, what they call cold patch. And the guys have to go back through, once a, once a hot patch plant's open up, which they did this, this past week, dig them back out again and fill them in with the hot stuff so they're good. Part of the problem we had this week was the guys got out there and I don't know, what was it, a three-hour wait mark? It was long.
Yeah, because everybody was there. It was long, like Janey.
Yeah, so it was right on Genesee Street. They get the, because the guys got to get the holes open. They send the trucks in to get the blacktop, to get the holes open. They sat there three hours because there were so many people because it was their day of sunshine since the plant's been open. But that's, that's why it looks like we're digging them back up again and we literally are, but it's to do a final patch.
And just to be clear, there was no water issues?
No, there was not.
That they were touching?
No, we have a few valves that, some of those big breaks that we have, they're leaking now. now, we're going to have to go back and work on them, but that's just, that's routine maintenance. But that's kind of what we're doing with that. And other than that, unless there's questions?
I'm all set. No questions, to the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Many of you have alluded this evening to the tragic loss that our community has suffered with the passing of Lieutenant Mike Housak and Syracuse Police Officer Mike Johnson. Our agency is impacted by that as well. Most of us had worked with Hooch. One of our officers, or actually two of them, served with him in the Morris Corners Fire Department. One of our officers is going to be at Paul Bear, representing the fire department on Monday at his services. Officer Mike Johnson from the Syracuse Police Department, one of our officers, her family knows his family, and another one of our officers went to elementary school with him. So our department is impacted by this as well. And it's a simple tragedy that's unspeakable, and I don't have words to describe it. I wish I did. We will have a contingent going to the calling hours tomorrow. We will have a contingent going to the funeral on Saturday for Officer Johnson. We'll have a contingent at the funeral on Monday for Lieutenant Housak. I will be at all three events with our staff, supporting our colleagues from the Syracuse Police and the Anadaga County Sheriff's Office. I would remind anyone watching or here tonight, that the law enforcement officers that were on that scene and that were responding to that scene, this was their colleague, this was their friend that was killed, they had to keep working. They had to come to work the next day and the day after and take the same calls that we take on a daily basis. The mission of law enforcement is to protect the vulnerable from harm. That's the task that we've been given by the various governments that employ us. And that's what they were doing, is trying to protect vulnerable citizens from harm. And the sacrifice that they made is the ultimate one. There's nothing more for me to say, other than I certainly appreciate the support of the community. I've had many people, some of which I don't really know all that well, reach out to me to express support for the organization, for myself personally. We had somebody drop off flowers at the police department, didn't leave a name, purposefully just put a thank you card, didn't sign it, that we have inside the police department, and other things, as well as a show of support. Even though our organization wasn't directly there or impacted, it certainly impacts us all in our profession. To the mayor's comment about the dangers inherent for us, a day or two later, there was a call in one house outside the village, where the sheriff's office had to respond, bring their barricade, bring their SWAT team. An individual was going through an emotional time for themselves. They were heavily armed, and we had officers on scene there that were put in pretty severe danger, as every officer was on that scene, due to the firepower that that person has within their home. So to the mayor's point, no community is safe, no community is immune to the scourge of violence that is within our country and in our community. That's all I have to say, Mayor, unless there's questions or comments for me. Thank you.
Moving to pending business. I have a motion to modify the salary we have. Do I need another motion?
Yeah, because we tabled it.
We tabled it, okay. So need a motion to modify the salary compensation schedule for part-time information aide and DPW clerk to twenty dollars and eighty-seven cents per hour.
Moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Assume this will go into effect whenever, the next pay period, whatever? Thank you. Moving to new business. How many of these will I end up doing during the year?
As many as we make you.
May I have a motion to proclaim Thursday, May thirtieth, 2024, as Memorial Day in the Village of Baldwinsville?
You guys all got it, good job. They beat me. They beat me straight up.
Did we get a second out of all that movement?
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess part of this, this is when I read the proclamation?
Yep.
Okay. "The Village of Baldwinsville Proclamation. Whereas Memorial Day is a time to reflect on the past, remembering those who helped guarantee our freedoms, and to set aside a day to remember the accomplishments of men and women of valor and courage. And whereas our founding fathers had the wisdom to assure freedom guaranteed and protected by the Constitution of the United States more than two hundred years ago, Americans have answered the call to service, and the honorable service performed in the defense of our nation and her cause in time of war is the highest form of citizenship. And whereas the men and women who served in the armed forces of the Grand Army of the Republic, World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Persian Gulf War in Iraq and Afghanistan, and now the War on Terrorism, have made heroic sacrifices to preserve freedom. And whereas we honor the memory of those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to protect the United States of America and our allies, and those who are missing in action, and all who may still be prisoners of war, that they will be returned home without delay, we also honor those who continue to fight for freedom around the globe. And whereas the services performed by these millions of gallant Americans have demonstrated the willingness of our nation to meet the challenges of those forces wishing to subjugate individual determination through armed conflict. And whereas the Baldwinsville Memorial Day Committee wishes to keep the traditional day of May thirtieth as the day to commemorate Memorial Day in Baldwinsville. And whereas Memorial Day was established by General Order Number Eleven on five May eighteen sixty-eight to commemorate fallen comrades who died in defense of their country. And whereas we remember veterans of all wars and show our appreciation with our vigilance, if not our presence, we will ensure that they did not die in vain. And therefore, I Bruce Stevens, Mayor of the Village of Baldwinsville, County of Anadaga, State of New York, declare Thursday, May thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to be Memorial Day in the Village of Baldwinsville, to honor those men and women who paid the ultimate price to preserve the principles of freedom." I don't have to read the next part, right? The next part's where I signed it. Okay.
Well done, Bruce.
I don't think I mispronounced anything. Okay. Item B. Could I have a motion to approve the Little League adding an additional field at Reeves Baseball Field?
Motion.
Second.
Yes, do you want to address us, Dan? This is Dan Krugan represents the Little League. He's all dressed for it.
Matt's. So I have a map here that I'll share with everybody. The green area here is the property owned by the village, and what we are asking for We're asking for approval to add an additional field in the top left corner, which is past the left field outfield fence of the large field. And the purpose for this will be a T-ball field. We're currently at six hundred and thirty-five kids participating in the program. We're one of the largest Little Leagues in the state. And next year, Little League International is allowing any kids to join any program at the T-ball level. So we're expecting another influx of kids next year. And it starts at that T-ball level, so adding another field on the existing village property would be a big benefit to the program.
Thank you.
Is that enough room?
It is enough room, because we don't need, you know, there's not, the kids are five, six, and seven, so we don't need a lot of room.
So you could really just plug them in all over, that you could go?
Well, there's not a lot of open space, but we could try.
The most significant thing is he's going to put up a little backstop.
Yes, yes. And under the Parks, Reeves Parks Committee agreement, there are seven members. We met last week at the fields. The members approved or recommended seven zero to move forward with it, and since the village owns the property, the village also has to approve. Thank you. Any questions?
No, but I would suggest, once again, if there's residents of Baldwinsville who've never ventured out to the Little League Park, to go out there sometime when they're playing, it's just kids having a great time. You guys provide a tremendous service for the youth of our area. Boys and girls are out there.
Yes, and I'll add, May fourth is the opening day, so it's a big event at the park. We'll have, the fire department's coming out. We're going to have a special one dollar hot dog, dollar hot dog special, but it's a day that every kid that plays in the program comes through the park at some time in the day.
Don, last year, I think it was last year, you were here, someone was here. You were talking about, I forget if it was like a statewide event or something that you were going to be hosting. Did that happen last year?
Yes, it did. So we are, we were awarded a three-year sectional, All-Stars sectional tournament. And so last year, there were four teams that came from areas in the South. So we had Horseheads and kids from Maine Enwell, the team that won, you know, the World Series some years back. So we had, we hosted for a weekend for the sectionals. So this is a step before the state level, and it's our goal is to get to the point that we can bring in a big state event.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor of a T-ball field? Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Opposed to children. That'd be a tough one to vote no on.
That would be.
Okay, item C. Motion to appoint the following as seasonal laborers in the Parks Department with an effective date of April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Andrew Rice at seventeen eighty-seven per hour. Patrick Lammran at twenty-one point zero one per hour.
Motion.
Second.
Do you want to say anything on this, Mr. DPW Superintendent?
I'm sorry, Mike could be in trouble again. I was talking to him.
It's your seasonal employee appointments.
Oh, one of them are here. Nope, actually, we wanted to put them on last week, and they do a tremendous job for us. I mean, they take care of, they take care of all the one. Rick is here now, and I probably should have put them on last week, it was snow in our last meeting, but they're going to start Monday morning. We did, the full timers did a little bit at the grant, because all of a sudden the grass came out, but they take care of our bathrooms in the parks during the summer, and they do a fantastic job. And we're glad to have them back on board. And we'll be, I think we'll be appointing one more here soon, but we're going to get to two and one now, and they're going to start Monday.
Weather permitting? All set on that new mower? Okay.
We got a new mower, we'll let anybody ride it until Rick gets in there, so.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Item D. Could I have a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Johnson as Special Patrol Officer effective April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four?
I'll move it.
Second.
Did you want to say anything?
No.
Chief? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item E. Motion to appoint Jim Hawthorne to the Architectural Review Board effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Good guy. Jim Hawthorne.
You know, okay. If people don't know, Jim has actually worked eighteen years up at Syracuse Home. Head of operations in.
He's great to work with. We've worked with him a lot, he was good to work with.
And he's agreed to help the village out now.
That's a good appointment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Item F. Motion to appoint Lisa Heitman to the Tree Advisory Committee effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we know Lisa?
I know Lisa, she's.
She likes trees?
She loves trees.
Lisa emailed me today, she would be here, but she's under the weather.
Does she like pear trees?
They smell, they look.
The chair of the committee does not.
Lisa has opinions, though.
Well, good, we'll get along fine.
She's also vice president of the Women's.
Garden club, yeah. So apparently she likes plants.
Yes.
If there's anyone else watching or listening who would like to participate in this committee, please contact the village clerk's office, and they will get ahold of me. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome Jim and Lisa. Item G. Motion to authorize the mayor to attend NITECOM's annual meeting in Bolton Landing, New York, from May fifteenth to seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, with a cost not to exceed one thousand dollars. It is a budgeted item.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Don't know. I've already paid for it. I don't know if I'm going to ask for reimbursement or not. I see the deputy mayor checking her calendar. Yes, the sixteenth is a board meeting, so hopefully you're in town.
I should be in town.
Excellent.
My brother-in-law's birthday, but I don't need to travel to Connecticut for his birthday.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And the purpose of my going to this is to try and learn how to be a mayor. This is a school for mayors. Thank you, I think. Item H. Motion to declare Friday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day in the Village of Baldwinsville.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
This one comes with another proclamation. Okay, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton, and everybody should remember that for trivia, proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our cities increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Baldwinsville has repeatedly been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation for thirty-six years, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now, therefore, I Bruce Stevens, Mayor of the Village of Baldwinsville, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day. In the Village of Baldwinsville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and I further urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. So be it. Chuck, can you tell us, I know we bought trees to plant on Arbor Day, have you selected where they'll be planted yet?
We have selected them, and they're in the ground, and I don't remember off the top of my head where they are. I believe we planted them this week. I talked to Danny, and I knew you were going to ask me that.
So we're not planting one on Friday, April?
Normally, we try to get them ahead of time, just so.
Thank you. Is there anything else any of the trustees wish to bring up?
You had an additional item you want.
That's not on my agenda.
Your senior center roof. We all wrote it down, clearly you didn't.
No, I didn't write, I don't have it. Could I have a motion on I, my, whatever?
To, I'll make a motion to expend an additional sixty-five thousand on the senior center roof project beyond the hundred thousand that we've already.
Second.
Approved.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. And I already asked if you had anything else, so I assume you don't. Could I have a motion to pay bills as audit?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Could I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at?
Eight nineteen.
Eight nineteen.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you for coming out, hope to see you on May second, it's not in two weeks.